Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good morning, Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard live for free on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 26th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The Chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That was not bad in unison.
Okay, so your first item is public comments relating to matters not on the agenda, and I'll bring up the speaker list. Our first speaker is Richard Otterstad.
And Madam Clerk, you're going to keep an eye on the 30 minutes?
Correct.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My first time here, so bear with me.
Welcome.
I'm a resident of Sacramento County and also of New California State. And my topic this morning is the election integrity. I grew up right after World War II. I'm 77 years old. I was born right after that. What I observed was a nation that was patriotic, a nation that trusted in their government, where they understood that we're a free country after having fought a war against tyranny. So what I observed growing up in San Diego, I went with my parents to the polls. You walk in, you go to the first desk, and it's, they check your name to make sure that you're registered. You show your ID. It's the same day. Everyone seemed to find time to vote between 7:00 in the morning and 8:00 at night. You would vote when you would go home. You'd turn on the television late at night, and by 12:00, you had the results, local, state, and national, of the election. These were paper ballots, voter ID, same day, and it worked very, very well. And we all had confidence in a free government working that way. But that is not how it's been of late. We have great questions, as you all know, as to the system that we're doing. The question of machines is a serious question, and I just would like for this Board to consider that it has not always been with machines. And there's a great deal of concern about where these machines will go. Now, if you need an absentee ballot, you could have requested one, whether you were military or so forth. If there was a too-close election, there were paper ballots that could be counted.
Mr. Otterstad, can you please wrap up your comments, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the next speaker comes, I'm going to just remind one more time, and we're not taking off the 30 minutes while I do this, that we will take as many speakers as we can for two minutes each, up to 30 minutes. At that point, we have to go to timed items in business that we have to get done today. So then after that, anybody who has signed up to speak who hasn't had an opportunity will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Perry Ferrucci. I'm a resident of Sacramento County, and I'm here representing New California State this morning, again talking about the concerns about voter integrity in the county and the As I understood it, all of you have sworn support to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the State of California. And to that extent, I would like to talk a little bit about the Guarantee Clause in the U.S. Constitution. I'm assuming you're all aware of that clause. Is that correct? I see a few people shaking heads. The Guarantee Clause basically guarantees the citizens of the United States a republican form of government, protection from invasion, and protection from domestic violence. Certainly in the State of California, we don't seem to have any of those three guarantees as far as the state is concerned. Even in the federal government, we have problems with protection from invasion because we have open borders. And if you all saw the 60 Minutes segment, it talked about all the Chinese coming through and have an app on their phone to how to get into the State of California. So that raises a great deal of concerns about the election process that we have in place now, mail-in ballots with no guarantee that there's going to be any continual review of those ballots as they're mailed in or sent to the people that are going to mail those or vote those ballots. We're also concerned about the computerized vote.
Mr. Ferrucci, can you please wrap up your comments? Thank you.
Yes. I just want to say that I worked in information systems for 41 years, and I know how susceptible computers are to abuse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll also remind the audience that, as these are items not on the agenda under the Brown Act, we won't be exchanging back and forth with the Board, but we are listening. Thank you.
My name is Jim Reeves, and I'm with New State of California, rural SAC. I'm going to read here the Declaration of Independence, 1776. In part, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." It goes on to say that "when any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish and to institute a new government. And prudence will dictate that the government's long established should not be changed for light or transient reasons." This gets us to the Guarantee Clause of the U.S. Constitution, Article 4, Section 4. "The United States shall guarantee to every state in its union every republican form of government, and it shall protect each of them against invasion and, on application of the legislature or of the executive, when the legislature cannot be convened, against domestic violence." This article should be self-explanatory. But throughout the state, closing the prisons and underfunding law enforcement equaled domestic violence. And a republican form of government is not a democracy and a sanctuary policy throughout the state. I lost my place. We'll move on. "The State of California has violated its compact with the U.S. Congress, and that means we have broken away from the Union of States, resulting in a succession effort much like the southern states did during the Civil War. The only difference is, the South succeeded overtly, while California has succeeded covertly." So we, the people, are establishing a new government called the State of New California. We will have a one-day vote for our legal citizens with the ID and proof of residency. Then we will see if you are truly elected officials and have been these many years selected, or have been these many years selected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Reeves.
My name is Lynn Reeves, and I am here with New California State. California is broke. The state has already taken money away from the cities, the counties, and schools. And now they just defaulted on a federal loan repayment for EDD of $20 billion. Unfortunately for them, the feds have the right and the ability to take money right out of their bank accounts. So overall, California is in big trouble financially, and therefore, you are also. The November election is rapidly approaching. Sacramento County is planning to pay an inordinate amount of money that you don't have to use the voting machines at our new, very large voting centers across the county. We know for sure that electronic voting systems will not secure an election. In fact, they will betray us. We have proven that, and there is plenty of evidence to show it. We need to go back to one-day voting at small precincts where the ballots cast can be hand-counted immediately after the polls close, and then we can have the results of our election that night. There is no reason that we have to wait up to 29 days after the election to get our results. All California State Boards need to recognize that the elections belong to the citizens, not county officials, and certainly not state or federal entities. The citizens of this county demand that the control of their elections be returned to them and that hand-counting in small precincts be reinstated immediately. The amount of money this county could be saving by removing the electronics from our voting systems is astounding. In addition, it would be a great step toward having our citizens regain confidence in our election results. Bottom line, you need to return our elections back to we, the people. And I'd like to also just have a prayer for the gentleman that was taken by ambulance. I pray that he has really good recovery fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Mattson.
Thank you so much, Chair Kennedy. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Clerk. To our Board of Supervisors, you are elected. You are elected by we, the people, and you serve and you have an oath to represent we, the people. I'm here to talk about the elections and using machines. My name is Sarah Mattson, and I reside in Sacramento County, District 3, right now. But New California State will end up becoming my home and my county, rural Sacramento. I want to share with you some details and numbers about what it costs to do elections by machines. Out of the 1.5 million residents in Sacramento County, about 868,000 are registered voters. In the primary, it costs $19.50 just to mail those ballots to every registered voter. That's $17 million, now counting the processing that you have to add on to that to when they return them. And about 33% of those registered voters return their ballots. What it would cost to become in-person, on paper, one-day, small precincts is gigantic variation. We're talking $1.90 per ballot, count, know the results, clear ballot boxes. We would know the results by the evening, and it would be completely transparent. It would be a no-brainer. Please, Supervisors, you have the authority. You can cancel the Dominion contract for a nominal fee. We're asking, the we, the people, are demanding, please, let's go back to paper ballots one day. No need for 29 days ahead, 27 days after, to count fraud occurs. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Betty Holquin? Or Holquin, sorry.
Hi, my name is Betty Holquin. I'm with New California. I joined New California the other day because clearly something's going on across the United States of America. We have corruption in every state in every election. In California, your voters don't feel like their vote even counts. I went in last, in 2022, into the election board at 65th Street, and I noticed there's a room next to the Dominion machines, and the ballot, the final ballots go into that room, but it's, no one can see in that room. And then there's a door from that room to the glass room. And I noticed also that during the 2022 election, there was, they weren't running. The machines weren't running when we were in there. And I thought, well, everything looks transparent as you follow the ballot in, and that's what we asked to do from the warehouse, and we followed the ballot matching signatures. Everything looked great, except when you got to where the ballot goes, right before it goes into that room. That room is like a closet or a storage room, and you can't see in it. So I asked the lady that was giving us the tour if she would open that room, and she said it's top clearance, and she gave some numbers behind it. But I insisted she open the room, and she reluctantly pulled her string key and opened the door, and I saw ballots stacked in there. And I thought, why is this room not transparent? Why can't we see where the final ballots? What's going on here? Because what we're looking for is why on earth we're having all of these policies being put in California when no one here wants them? Why we're spending our money, like she said, $19.50 for, I think the machines are supposed to make it go faster, right? But we have like three weeks before we know? How is, explain that to, you can't explain it. Now, I have something else to say with my final second. God is calling all of us. You need to listen. You need to do the right thing. You have the opportunity now. You will not someday, but you need to listen to and not think that what I'm saying isn't the truth.
Betty, can you please wrap up your comments?
Good morning to you all.
Morning.
It's a pleasure to be able to be here. My name is Kenneth Calvin, Jr. This is quite the roomful of opinions. I know that each one of us has one, and they're all pretty cheap. But what I'll say is, in California and, you know, in Sacramento in general, it's a nice town. But over the last four years, I've been walking the streets, I've worked in outreach, and man, if you could bring the smells of this city into this room, if you could see the people who are suffering in this room, crime, right? We have drug addiction. We have people killing themselves. Suicide is skyrocketing. Sex trafficking. Why is that a thing? Right? Why are these things a thing? Now, obviously, I understand I'm saying this just out loud in this room. I know that you guys aren't in control of everything. But you are in control of a lot. And I'm also here with New California State, and we all showed up here for different reasons and have gotten involved for different reasons. We believe that you all have the opportunity to serve and to do very, very well. It's your God-given responsibility. When America was founded, there wasn't just Christians sitting around a table putting together a constitution. And when we salute the flag, it says "One Nation Under God." How do we get that and still have separation between church and state? They're two different institutions. The laws of this land are to be governed with integrity. That's why we're talking about voting. It's so important that we have integrity. And it's so important, like, think about this. Somebody's being sex trafficked right now as we talk about it, okay? That should never be happening. That's disgusting. But just imagine if that same person who was out sex trafficking had to think, I could lose my life today if I do this. And how about every other person out there committing some egregious crime that we're all so, it's normal. Look at us. We're so casual. This is normal now. My friend's mom, he died about 10 days ago. This young boy got shot. He took two shots. Why? You know, when things begin to spiral, people think, couldn't we have done more? And now I have to watch his mom sitting outside crying every single day? 16-year-old girl, she was sex trafficked just a few years ago, close to my family. Blessings to you all. Can we just do a little more?
Thank you. Sandy.
My name is Sandy, and I'm one of we, the people. And I am here to help instruct you and remind you to abide by both our state and federal constitutions you took an oath to protect and uphold. This morning, I come to remind you of a U.S. Supreme Court ruling, which occurred late last month regarding enforcement of bans on homeless people sleeping outside. The case involved the city of Grants Pass, Oregon, who wanted to enforce an anti-camping statute that allows police and local officials to remove homeless people from public spaces. The lower courts, including the Ninth Court of Appeals, had ruled against the request, stating that the provision regarding cruel and unusual punishment found in the Eighth Amendment was being violated. However, the Supreme Court, in a 6-3 decision, overturned their ruling and said that local policy for the homeless is not controlled by the Eighth Amendment, and the city of Grants Pass could indeed enforce their ordinance prohibiting homeless people from sleeping and camping out in public spaces. It was decided that the power and authority for policy regarding homeless encampments should reside with the community to determine this. Therefore, local communities can address their homeless problem by removing the people from public spaces and banning them from sleeping outdoors and in encampments as necessary. So along with this reminder, I encourage you to balance empathy and support to maintain public order and safety as you enforce existing Sacramento County camping ban policies and sweeps, which will help in mitigating public health and safety issues associated with these homeless encampments. Thank you for your attention, and just another reminder that, yes, we are not a democracy, we are a republic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. David Capazano.
Hello, my name is David Capazano, and I'm with we, the people. And I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors and Florence for your hard work and dedication to SAC County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chair Supervisors. I'm a carpenter. Today, I stand before you to shed light on three critical pillars of societal well-being: livable wages, healthcare accessibility, and apprenticeships in construction. Firstly, the concept of livable wage is not just about earning enough to survive, but thriving with dignity. It ensures that individuals can afford the basics, food, shelter, and healthcare. Secondly, healthcare should not be a luxury, but a fundamental human right. Accessible healthcare ensures that no one has to choose between financial ruin and their well-being. Lastly, apprenticeships in construction offers a pathway to sustainable careers and economic stability. By investing in vocational training, we not only address the skilled labor shortage, but also provide opportunities for personal growth and development. In conclusion, let us strive for societal well-being where access to livable wages, healthcare, and opportunities for advancement.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisors. My name is Alexander Hampton. I'm a field representative for the North Cal carpenters and Local 46. I want to share my experiences through apprenticeship and how it changed my life. In 1986, I was going to Luther Burbank High School, lifting weights. I passed out, went into a coma, had a brain aneurysm. Had to learn how to read, write, walk all over again. I had what you call foot drop, left side weakness. The reason I tell this story is because in 2008, I joined the carpenters' union. And in the carpenters' union, you, once you sign up to be an apprentice, you have, you get on a list, and you also can look for your own work. So I decided to look for my own work, and my very first job was at the very same hospital I saved my life, Methodist Hospital in South Sacramento. I just want to say to everyone, you know, if you have any setbacks, any problems in life, don't give up on yourself. Look yourself in the mirror. Don't point the fingers. Move forward, and you will be successful in whatever you do in life. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Katrina Renham.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Katrina Renham, and I'm a deputy district attorney in Sacramento County. I currently manage a team of seven attorneys, all of which are just beginning their legal profession. I love my job so much that I couldn't possibly describe it to you in the limited two-minute window. However, for the first time in my 12 years of being a DA, my enthusiasm for my work is being overshadowed by my frustration toward the lack of equitable compensation. We've been out of contract for over two years at this point, and my frustration toward that isn't just for myself, it's for the younger attorneys who are entering this profession, who we want to retain and who we so desperately need to retain. On the consent calendar this morning, I saw that the clerk of the Board is on to get a 7% pay increase. I have absolutely no doubt that she deserves that. The Board clearly commissioned a compensation report, reviewed it and agreed with its findings, and decided to pay her fairly. But we, too, have a report calling for a fair equity raise and back pay, and that report was generated by a neutral fact-finder who heard both parties litigate the information before him. That report is very thorough. It's 60 pages, and it's well-reasoned. And yet, the conclusions within that report have been completely disregarded by the labor His offer has not changed, not once in two years, not even by 1%. So why is this report that everyone worked so hard on for so long being completely ignored by both labor and this Board? I'm aware that our union representatives have come to you and notified you of the fact that labor has not changed its position, and yet this Board seems unwilling to take action. It's incomprehensible to so many of us why this impasse process and fact-finding report is not being given the respect it deserves. Today, my request and hope for the Board is that you end this impasse process and give us the fair compensation that that report outlines. Thank you.
Just a reminder, if we have that consistently, we're just cutting into other people's time to speak.
Good morning. May I?
Morning, yes.
My name's Addie Young. I am a supervisor at the Public Defender's Office. My current assignment is felony mental health diversion and collaborative courts. I have been with the Public Defender's Office for 17 years. To show you how big this issue is and how important it is, if I could see a show of hands of who is a DA or public defender in this room right now. Thank you. Along with my team, I work every single day to try to reduce the jail population by getting clients into mental health diversion. I want to talk a little bit about how our inability to retain attorneys in my office and the district attorney's office stymies that process, resulting in additional costs to our county and additional bad press. I am frustrated that our county has been out of contract for over two years. This is stopping us from retaining experienced attorneys. We used to do over 20 misdemeanor trials in a rotation. We now are lucky to get out five. Every time, a caseload has to be reassigned because we lose an experienced lawyer. Cases continue, clients sit in jail, the costs mount. New attorneys have to come onboard, those new attorneys have to be trained, and there's further delays in order to get them up to speed to be able to try a case, to handle a motion, to take care of a client. And that is on our side, and that is also on the district attorney's side. We've seen this happen before in Fresno, where Fresno had a mass exodus of experienced attorneys from the Public Defender's Office. That resulted in a lawsuit by the ACLU and an ultimate settlement to bring them within fair compensation for the job that they were doing. It was found, in fact, that they were inadequate counsel. We are trying to prevent our office from becoming inadequate constitutionally, and we are trying to uphold the May's consent decree. Our county is under a microscope. We are doing our part as court partners, as agency partners, to try to end the backlog and get people out, saving the county money. Please fairly compensate us.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Danny Lee, and I'll be entering my eighth year now as a deputy district attorney here in Sacramento County. My office, as well as my colleagues from the Public Defender's Office, are now about two years out from contract. two years out from contract. It's frustrating. It's frustrating because a neutral fact-finder, one that both the Association as well as this county agreed to as a neutral fact-finder and a neutral chairperson, has presented to this county a 55-page report, one that outlines many recommendations, including a 5.5% equity salary increase. And unlike some other salary increases in recent times before this board, some of which have made certain positions the highest paid in the entire state, this 5.5% increase is merely competitive. In the fact-finder's own words, it makes us minimally competitive. It takes us to the 50th percentile. And this is based on the marketplace, but this is also in consideration with the board's very own compensation study done by Ralph Anderson and Associates. And why is it important to be minimally competitive? Well, it prevents turnover rates. It prevents attorneys from leaving for other counties, which is already happening. And without being minimally competitive, you make it very difficult to retain, to attract talented DAs and talented public defenders. I'm a Level 4 attorney right now, and a Level 4 attorney in Sacramento County makes less in compensation than all the other counterparts in its neighboring counties: Placer County, the Bay Area, Solano, San Joaquin, Santa Clara, you name it. They make more, we make less. And we did a little research. As it stands right now, all those counties I just mentioned, they're currently hiring. They're actively hiring attorneys. All those counties I just mentioned, they make more than us, we make less. My question to you is, how do you attract and how do you retain talented candidates from top-tier law schools to fill these all-too-important positions of deputy DAs and assistant public defenders if all these other counties have better compensation? Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Klinkenbeard?
Good morning. My name is Tom Klinkenbeard. I'm a supervising attorney with Sacramento County Public Defender's Office. I'm currently assigned to the homicide unit. I've been with office for over 17 years. I've been asked this morning to address this board very briefly with some of the issues regarding recruitment and retention, and specifically to debunk the idea that the vacancy rate within our office is a significant indicator of the fairness of our compensation package. As a case study on this issue, I'd refer the board to the 16 positions that were allocated to the Public Defender's Office in the 2023-2024 budget year. In that year, the Board of Supervisors recognized that the Public Defender's Office is the most cost-effective and efficient way of ensuring the representation, the constitutionally-required representation of indigent defendants. However, if we look at what happened with those 16 positions, we soon find there are significant problems with recruitment and retention. We should have filled those positions with a mixture of lateral, experienced lawyers who could handle complex litigation and serious cases, as well as relatively inexperienced new lawyers. However, that was not what happened. Disproportionately, we were not able to recruit experienced lawyers because our compensation package is inadequate to draw attorneys with experience from comparable offices to work for us. Instead, we relied heavily on hiring inexperienced attorneys. It took almost eight months to fill those positions. We had significant recruitment problems. Beyond that, we had retention issues. More than half of those attorneys have already left. I would ask this board to grant the fact-finder's proposal and to fairly compensate our union members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the end of our 30-minute period, so if there's any other speakers that would like to address the board, we will take that up after our timed items. So we will now hear consent. Madam Clerk?
Okay. For your consent matters, items 2 through 32. For item 3, you're adopting an ordinance amending Sacramento County Code Chapter 2.56, Article 4 relating to the Procurement Opportunities Program and Delegated Purchase Order Program. For item 24, I am going to ask the board to drop this item.
So moved. Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right.
That concludes the clerk's notes.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple of supervisors who have punched in. Supervisor Serna?
Yes, I had a question on item 9.
On 9? Okay. For item 9, this is to authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute an agreement for construction management and inspection services with Parsons Transportation Group, the near-construction management and joint venture.
Good morning, Director Nickel.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here. So I'm in possession of some late correspondents from ETTI who has expressed, I will say, somewhat ambiguous concern. It's not altogether clear to me where that concern rests currently, as they acknowledge that they have some limited standing, I guess, to object to what's before us in terms of action on item 9. They do spend some considerable time discussing concerns, from what I can glean, about the 71-J vetting process. Can you speak to what, how that occurred and what your confidence level is that we've exhausted the exploration of making sure that those in county civil service don't already possess the skill set and ability to perform the tasks that are associated with this contract?
So I'll give you just a brief overview, and then TJ Chen, my deputy for planning and development, will add. He was involved in the 71-J process per se. Just a brief overview, so the building and inspection division folks will continue to do the plan check review, no changes to them. Our construction management inspection division staff, which is what ETTI is speaking to, will continue to lead all of our CIP projects, as you know, which are a lot massive. The SMF Forward projects, they'll actually lead three of them: Terminal A, the Broadway, as well as the Ground Transportation Center, excuse me. They will also, we, as you know, are completely changing all of our concessions, and they will be helping with that. So we actually, rather than displacing any CMID folks, we need them to hire all the positions that the board has approved. So they need to add people. The construction management inspection services folks will handle the four largest SMF Forward projects: the pedestrian walkway, concourse B, the garage, and the consolidated rental car facility. TJ was involved in the 71-J process, and I'd like him to speak to that.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Supervisor. TJ Chen, Department of Airports Deputy Director of Planning Development. So we followed the county of me and comfort process. We coordinated with the Labor Relations Office, and they provide notification to the labor unions and request offer to meet. ETTI responded that it would like to meet, and we followed that process. We met at June 25th and had a productive meeting. And the following day, based on discussion, we thought we heard that they do not oppose to the CMIS contract, and we, Labor Relations Office issued a letter on June 26th in order to find the outcome of our discussion and without the process ended when it comes to me and comfort process.
TJ, were there objections verbally expressed, though, in conversations?
I do not recall. And there's a lot of questions. There's certainly, as their letter that is sent to the board this morning stated that there's still requests for the county to consider the limited term type of positions. We had some discussion, even expressed that those may not need the immediate needs of SMF Forward, and that certainly, as the Department of Airports, we have no control over those type of positions because those typically reside with CMID or PPI.
Well, I'm prepared to support this this morning. I just thought it was worth noting on the record that this, I'll just call it a concern, has been expressed by ETTI. But I would hope that we are not going to wait, as we move forward with the project, that we're not going to wait for the context to present itself. And by that, I mean, we're going to have productive, ongoing conversations with all of our relevant county agencies that have something to do with SMF Forward, so that there's kind of a better understanding when we go into perhaps otherwise very sensitive conversations about whether or not 71-J is executed. So I'm seeing not in head, so that's enough confidence for this supervisor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a comment on item number 19, please.
Item number 19, you're acting as a Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Approve a resolution requesting collection of Sacramento County Groundwater Sustainability Agency fees.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank our water agency, in particular Chris Hunley, for the work that he's been doing with the Kasuna sub-basin. It is one of the only sub-basins in the region that has an overdraft anticipated, and as we look at implementing Sigma, this money will go toward at least studying what projects can be done in order to reverse the effects of that overdraft. And I do not take this decision lightly, but I've been on the front lines of this with our agricultural partners, many of whom are on the Board of Directors for the Farm Bureau. And while this is a departure from business as usual, they accept that it's kind of the new face of water delivery within California. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I just want to say, as far as item 10, if you want to read that in...
Yep. For item 10. Item 10 is a contract for the power in road bicycle and pedestrian improvements?
Yeah, just one more time. We've been talking about this section of road for quite some time, many years, actually. So I want to really thank Community Development, DOT, for, you know, continuing to, you know, keep this on the forefront, and thank you for your efforts. We truly, this, you know, it's an easy thing to do to votes in something that's on consent, but to step back a moment and realize that we are truly saving lives by doing this. So thank you very much. All right. Is there any member of the public, Madam Clerk, that has an item on consent they'd like to discuss?
We do not have any public comments for consent.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous with those members present? And so for item 33, this is the response, let me display that, this is the response to the June 7, 2024 grand jury report related to the care and welfare of foster teens.
Michelle Callejas, I'm the Director for Child, Family, and Adult Services. Good morning, everyone. So I'd like to start first by thanking the grand jury for focusing on this important issue. In their report, they made six findings and eight recommendations. I'm not going to go into each of them individually, but I will speak to some of the issues they noted in the report. Overall, we recognize that finding appropriate placements for youth with complex needs has been a challenge for us. We've tried different approaches in the past that, quite frankly, have not been effective. But we have revamped and have taken a more comprehensive approach with both short and longer-term goals, and we are seeing some successes over this past year. The information on the grand jury report regarding the welcome home licensure is obsolete. The Community Care Licensing Division of the Department of Social Services issued temporary shelter care facility licenses for all three welcome homes on May 30, 2024, and we received those licenses the next day. There were concerns about overall operations and oversight of the welcome homes. Now that we are licensed, there will definitely be increased oversight, and there are four main bodies that will be doing that, in addition to myself as director and Melissa Lloyd as deputy director. This board will now serve as a welcome home Board of Directors. You will meet quarterly, and we will provide different data points that are prescribed, but also any others that this board might want. Some of the data will include average number of youths in each home, incident reports, any licensing violations, or other issues that we've seen over that last quarter.
Excuse me, Michelle.
Yeah.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. I don't mean to interrupt your flow.
All good, all good.
Especially on such an important subject. I believe, Mr. Villanueva, this is the first of multiple subjects that the grand jury has taken upon itself to review, that we are now hearing our response back to, correct?
That's correct.
So what I guess I'm asking of you is maybe give us two minutes of your thoughts so that the public understands the context of what we're doing. We jumped right into a subject without kind of giving everyone a primer on kind of just the surface-level legal requirements that the county has when it comes to grand jury reports and what our obligations are to respond. How do we respond? This is an annual exercise we go through. There are, if I'm not mistaken, statutory qualifiers in terms of when we say we respond in part, or we agree in part, or we agree entirely, or we disagree entirely. I think it's important for everyone in the room and who might be watching to understand that.
Sure. And I'll also lean on our county council if I do not state everything correctly. The grand jury, as you stated, creates a grand jury every year to look at a variety of public issues. This particular year, they looked at a couple as it relates to the county of Sacramento. They issue their report close to the end of the fiscal year, so sometime in the June timeframe. As part of that report, they come up with recommendations and findings as it relates to their findings and their reports. On the recommendation side, that's usually the first part of the grand jury report, and those recommendations have a requirement, there's a penal code out there, Section 933.05, that requires a certain prescribed way of responding to the grand jury report. One of those, on those recommendations, the respondent needs to pick one of three, one of two different types of responses. One is the respondent, which is us, agrees with the finding. The second is the respondent disagrees wholly or partially with that finding. And that's usually the prescribed requirement that the grand jury and the penal code requires us to do. In addition to that, we talk about it is required of whether or not the recommendation has been implemented, the recommendation has not been implemented, the recommendations require further analysis, and that analysis cannot go beyond six months, I believe. And then the last one is the recommendations will not be implemented. So those are the choices as it relates to the county's response as it relates to the grand jury recommendations. The second portion of that is the findings. And on the findings, I'm missing my notes. Maybe I'll look to county council to help me with the findings portion.
Actually, I think you...
Did I mix the two?
Yeah, you did them in reverse order, but you did...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You did say that for the findings, it's respondent agrees with the findings, or respondent disagrees wholly or partially with the findings.
And so as part of that response, we have a certain amount of time, depending on the response, depending on the grand jury's response, usually 60 days for us to respond. As a team, we work to prepare the responses for the Board of Supervisors. We allow at least two sessions for us to come. This would be the first one. If the board feels that we need to make recommendations or make changes to your responses because the responses are required from the Board of Supervisors, we will make those changes, bring them back to another board meeting, and then submit those to the grand jury for response. And we do that annually, or when there's findings.
Very good, thank you. I should note, too, that, and please, either of you chime in and correct me if I'm wrong here, but the grand jury is offered a good many resources for their, you know, information gathering responsibilities, including going to the media, including asking for reports from us, and also hosting confidential interviews with individuals. So that's kind of, again, for the public's benefit, where they're gleaning their information to come up with the conclusions that they do. And then lastly, this is a report that... And then lastly, this is a report that, of course, we're receiving orally here today by our appropriate executive team member, but we also provide it in writing for the record.
That is correct.
Okay, very good. That helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. So oversight about an operation, so this board will be the first body that will have oversight in your capacity as a Welcome Home Board of Directors. Second, we have the Sacramento Children's, Sacramento County Children's Coalition. This board appointed them to serve as a Welcome Home Community Advisory Body, so they will also, and we provide them data throughout the year, they will also make recommendations to the Board of Directors. Third is Community Care Licensing. They are the state regulatory and oversight body, and they conduct unannounced and announced visits to ensure compliance with licensing regulations, training, and other aspects of our program statements. We also submit incident reports to the state, so they have a compilation of those as well. And lastly, the Foster Youth Ombuds person, their role is to follow up on any complaints made about the homes. Sometimes our youths call them, and then they come out and do an investigation and interview the youth or other youth in the home. So the report also notes issues about youth safety, substance use, and our staff's ability to provide residential care. In full transparency, was a challenging start. Our staff had to adjust to providing 24/7 care and supervision in three different locations. In general, agencies are not allowed to provide care and supervision until they are fully licensed. The state granted us an exemption, and so our team was literally building the plane as they were flying it. They learned a lot, and we learned a lot, and we did our best to be responsive to issues that arose, both at the welcome homes and from neighbors in the areas. And I want to commend our engagement social workers, our child development specialists, and supervisors who have been serving in the welcome homes. They've done an incredible job in very challenging circumstances. So I want to assure this board that our department is firmly committed to addressing staff safety, youth safety, and substance use issues. There are three specific trainings that we offered, specific to work safety of our staff. The first is Workplace Violence Prevention for Field Workers. It focuses on how to conduct basic security or threat assessments in the field and in residential settings. A total of 18 staff, there are 52 that staffed the homes, the three homes, 18 of them have completed the Workplace Violence Prevention for Field Workers. But there are more trainings being offered in August, September, and October, and we will ensure all 52 staff take that training. Livesafe is another training we've offered for our staff. It's a non-lethal personal protection program that's designed to escape from aggressors or from containment of an aggressor. We provided one in May that had to be canceled due to lack of interest, so we offered it again in June, and 21 Welcome Home staff attended. There will be more classes offered in July and August, and we will make sure that all 52 staff participate in that training. The third of the core is Therapeutic Crisis Intervention. It's a de-escalation training for residential care staff. It focuses on preventing crises from occurring, de-escalating potential crises, effectively managing acute crises, and reducing potential and actual injury to children and staff. We have two phases, 25 of the 52 completed. Phase one, the remaining 27, will start in August, and then phase two will roll out in October, and again, all 52 staff will be required to take it. There are also additional trainings we offer, positive behavior intervention supports, conflict resolution for adolescents, skills for managing behaviors, all of which provide tools to reduce trauma and escalation. In addition to training, we've taken other steps to address staff and youth safety. Staff conduct inventory of youth belongings when they are placed in the welcome home, and when they return after an elopement. Elopement is a term for AWOL, we've moved away from AWOL, but it's when they leave placement without permission. Some use, so when they leave and come back, we search their belongings. CPS also worked with Community Care Licensing to amend our plan of operation to include the prudent parent standard, which allows our staff to conduct room searches if we have suspicion of drugs or weapons. In addition to onsite security officers, which we have 24/7 at all three welcome homes, we contract with the Sacramento Sheriff's Department to provide additional security for the welcome homes, and they've been great partners in this work. They provide quick responses when staff call them about drugs, weapon, and staff and youth safety issues. They also routinely drop into the welcome homes to check on youth and staff. The staffing includes 6.5 FTE, a detective, four deputies, a sergeant, and .5 lieutenant. The detectives does threat assessments and investigations regarding our youth who are being sexually exploited, and he's done some really good work with those youth. We also work closely with community-based providers who specialize in serving kids who are being sexually exploited. They go out to welcome homes to engage with youth, address their ongoing trauma, and some of our providers have been successful in helping our youth escape the world of sex trafficking. Behavioral Health Services has been great partners in this effort, and they have substance use clinicians that come out to our homes to engage with the youth. We didn't think many would want to engage, but they have. And so they teach them harm reduction techniques as well, understanding that many struggle to quit substance use. Regarding the finding and recommendation about placing children with relatives, we acknowledge we've struggled in this area. However, in December of 2023, we launched an extensive kin-first culture effort to increase relative placements and also to develop strategies to support the relatives that are caring for their kin. There are some unique challenges in those situations, so we want to make sure that we're supporting the relatives. We're working with several agencies to support this effort, and one of them will conduct an exercise called Kinship Sprints. They will interview staff, supervisors, our partners in county council, attorneys that represent children, judicial officers, to better understand any biases that might be playing out, or any misinterpretations of policy, to really try to identify barriers that have been impacting our low placement rates. The department knows that children, when placed with relatives, have better outcomes than foster children not placed with relatives. We've made this a priority area, and we are confident we will see significant improvement. And I just want to give a shout out to Supervisor Serna for providing us some funding for this initial effort. Once we get the results from the Kinship Sprints, we'll be developing some strategies, and we'll be using that funding accordingly.
And just to be clear, I don't unilaterally control purse strings around here.
Right, right. Thank you for supporting his proposal. So just in closing out, in the past year, and it's been a year, we've accomplished so much. We obtained licenses for three welcome homes. We did that in less than a year. Community Care Licensing was pretty shocked. There are some counties taking two to three years to get the licensing approved, so we did three homes within one year, and really commend our staff on that. We have engaged local and nearby providers in contiguous counties that have previously been not open to working with us for a number of reasons. We brought Behavioral Health Services to the table, and thank you, Tim Letts and your team, for helping us with this. So we've been able to engage providers, get the mental health contracts that are flexible so they can meet the significant mental health needs that many of our youth experience. We've partnered and contracted with Progress Ranch Treatment Services, and they are currently operating a licensed welcome home for us. We also entered into contracts with three foster family agencies to provide emergency home-based placements for our youth. Some go for 30 days, 60, 90. We started with zero homes in June, and we now have 13 homes and 15 beds, and we keep them full pretty regularly. A few of them have also taken some of our teens with infants and, you know, provided care and supervision for both of them until the teens hit the age of 18 and are able to transition into extended foster care. We expanded capacity at a local short-term residential therapeutic facility program, giving us six more slots. And then in August, it's anticipated that the children's receiving home will open up and give us six more shelter care placements. So all combined, it's a total of 30 placement beds with mental health services, with six more that we hope to come on in August. We will continue this work with providers, as we know, we still have a ways to go. Our long-term goal remains to get out of the county-operated welcome home business, and we'll be doing that by continuing the current strategies of engaging with more providers to create home-based placement capacity with mental health services. We will increase placements with relatives, and for this focus, we will likely go further upstream. We have roughly 60 kids that enter foster care each month. Imagine if we just got 90% of them with relatives, 100% ideally. You begin diminishing the flow into the welcome homes, because they're more likely to get out of foster care faster, more likely to stay in school, connected to family, they just do better. And then lastly, we will continue looking at creating local capacity for short-term residential therapeutic services. Some of our kids have really complex needs and require more intensive placements until they can step down into a home-based setting. So just want to say thank you to this board, to our county Executive's Office, to Health Services, and our partners for really supporting us in this effort. And open to questions.
Thank you. I'm going to kick it off here. You know, part of the reason we're here, by the way, fantastic report, very thorough, and I think that you've addressed the issues that have been kind of festering for a long time, and I do appreciate the cross-pollinization with other departments and meeting the needs of these kids. These are some of the hardest-to-serve kids in our system. Many of them come from traumatic backgrounds, suffer from PTSD, you know, and it's, they're hard to place. Unfortunately, the state of California didn't make it any easier when they said we could no longer do a group home environment, which isn't, I think we all admit, is not the greatest environment for these kids. However, they did not back it up with any alternatives. And so, you know, in light of that, it puts the county and you and your department in a very difficult position. We have the responsibility to protect these kids, but with no guidance from the state, that's been very difficult. I also want to, you know, acknowledge that part of the flaws of the grand jury system is the timing aspect of it. Often, by the time the grand jury gets done with investigating and interviewing and then writing a report, much of what they write is no longer relevant, as is evidenced by the licensing issue, which we have addressed. I guess one of the things that I would like to, because I've heard people talk about, and forgive me if I have the wrong phrase, but the Foster Child Bill of Rights, you know, for lack of a better phrase, and some feel that that is more limiting than I think it actually is, as is evidenced by our ability to search these kids and make sure that they're not going to harm either the staff, or the family members, or other children that are within the system. So, you know, can you just kind of address that? Because I've heard, you know, so many times, people try to hide behind that and say, well, we can't do anything. And that's not, in my understanding, that's just not the case.
Yeah, you're correct, and thank you for bringing that up. The Foster Youth Bill of Rights were put into place for a reason. So some of the basic ones, we can't put our kids in lock settings, understandably, right? So we can't lock the welcome homes. I know there are folks frustrated because we can't, you know, make them stay, we can't lock them in. So they are allowed to leave the premises. Our staff engage with them to try to say, okay, are you coming back, to just better understand the plan. Many of our kids leave and say, I'm just going to be away for a couple of hours, I'm going to the store, I'm going to a friend's, right? They're teenagers, they're going to do those things. And then they come back. So we work with our kids to try to make sure that if they do leave, they're going to a safe placement. Or many of them return. We had a young person return after being away for 30 days, and she came back, and she said, this is my safe place. And so staff tended to her, and we will keep, we'll start again looking for placement. The other piece is that we can't search youth belongings, we can't take things away. We can. We do search belongings when they come in and when they come back from an elopement. And as I mentioned, if there are suspicions of drugs or weapons in the home, we can conduct room searches, and we use our law enforcement partners when we find things. And then the other piece is kind of some frustrations that we make, we can't make kids go to placement. Kids have a right to be part of developing their case plan, right? They have a case plan with the court, and we work with them on meeting some of those. Could be, you know, mental health services, attending school, but they have a right to weigh in on their placement. And so if they say, I don't want to go to this home, then we can't make them. What we try to do is continue engaging to find, where is it that you will go, right? What is missing here? And we'll try to find that. Some of our kids don't want to go out of county, which I get. We have placements down in Bakersfield, San Diego. Our kids don't want to leave, which is why we're focused on developing local capacity, because we will, we've got, how many kids in, we've got eight kids today in home-based placements that were previously unwilling to go, because they're here, they're local, and they can stay connected to their friends and school. So does that help?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes, 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 thank you. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and appreciate your comments. Agreed 100% with everything you've said. First of all, I was a little frustrated when the grand jury report came out, because, yeah, it's not quite timely, because there's an awful lot of things we had already addressed from the investments initiated by Supervisor Serna on the kinship-first, family-first approach, to the licensure that we have been able to obtain. So I've gotten to know you and Melissa pretty well, because we cited a lot of those welcome homes in District 3, and so just on the natural, me and my staff have been talking to you a lot about our response. And I think that something, I think, to keep in perspective also, that I didn't really see, I think, fleshed out in the grand jury report, is that every county is struggling with this. And that was really not addressed. There have been so many changes at the state level in very short order, with a lot of limitations, as Supervisor, as the chair had mentioned. I have the good fortune to represent us at CSAC, the State Association of Counties, and we talk about these issues all the time, how County A is dealing with this, and County B, and how we're all struggling with these things. And I think there's also a misunderstanding by a lot of members of the community of how truly traumatized these teens are. You know, we're talking, these are older teenagers, sometimes up to 17 years old certainly, and they have been through a lot. So a lot of people will compare maybe a young foster child, it's not the same as a 16-year-old who has been out, sometimes out on the street, who is extremely vulnerable to predators. And so your staff and your office, you're in these welcome homes and these other settings, are dealing with these very, very challenging circumstances. And I appreciate you talking about the partnership you have with the Sheriff's Department, because I know a lot of times, at some of these welcome homes and other places, some of these predators who prey on these young kids will try to follow them there, whether that's someone who wants to get a child into sex trafficking, or sell drugs to a child, or get a child to sell drugs. So having that partnership is important. But I think it's, I wanted to highlight a few of those things, so the public understands the true complexity and the difficulty of this. And I know with the training for staff, I appreciate everything you laid out, and I know you will continue to evaluate the training needs, to make sure staff in these settings have the tools they need, right, and are prepared to deal with some of the difficult challenges that they face in dealing with this very vulnerable youth. But I'll just finish it up with, you know, I... But I'll just, I'll just finish it up with, you know, I, I, again, thanks to you and Melissa and everybody at DCFAS. The other component of this is, is where these welcome homes are cited. Obviously, there's, sometimes there's some community concerns about this, and you have been so wonderful in being very responsive to those concerns and building direct, I'm looking at Melissa over here, building direct relationships with a lot of my constituents. So, thank you for your, your very comprehensive response here today and for the work you do. I think this has been, um, I think this response really demonstrates the, the challenges that we're facing and the steps that, that the county and this board is taking to address them.
Sir, Roger Hume.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Director Kahas. Before I get into my comments, I just want to know, can I volunteer to be placed in San Diego?
[laughing]
Not to make light of the issue, I don't underestimate or discount the enormity and difficulty and intractability of the work that you are doing in this space and with such an untenable situation as, as many of these kids find themselves in. And there's a lot of factors, obviously, um, that we have to keep kind of as co-equal goals, right? The well-being, obviously, of the kids, the safety of our staff, and then to some degree the, you know, the uphold of law and order, not only within the homes, but with these predators who lurk right outside the door and are more than willing to take advantage of the vulnerability of these kids. And, and so in that, that's the first of my questions, is I know that in these welcome homes, we try and bifurcate by gender. Do we also do so by age, so that we're maybe keeping some of the younger, more susceptible kids away from, from those that, that might work on behalf of the predatory, uh, folks to, to help entice them into a dangerous situation?
Yeah, we try to do that as much as possible. So Progress Ranch Treatment Services that we're contracting with, they take our new removals. So it could be younger kids, but a lot of our younger kids, we're able to get straight to foster homes.
Good.
So if they do go to the Progress Ranch Welcome Home, they're there for a short period of time. We're also able to keep siblings together by going over there. But really, most of the kids that are in our welcome homes are between 14 and 17. But we do our best, which, you know, having a couple that, where we can shift girls, because we typically have more, uh, females. We try to also look at, are there any pinging off each other that we need to kind of separate? So our staff is really good about kind of assessing, assessing that within the homes.
Good. And then speaking of that, you and I had this conversation that in many cases, it's, it's easier, not easier, but there is a process for a child that is still within their family unit to seek emancipation and really trying to take independence over their lives. Have we looked at legislatively if there's a way to provide for that process within the foster care network?
Uh, foster, that foster youth certainly can emancipate. What we encourage is for them to stay in until they're 18 so that they can then transition to extended foster care. Because then we're able to help them with placements, they get a monthly stipend, we help them complete their education if they haven't. We have some kids who are attending community college or university. Um, so there's, there's benefits to staying in. But there are some, you know, 16, 15, 16-year-olds that are quite independent, right? Their working jobs, are going to school for all intents and purposes. Prior to extended foster care, they could emancipate. What we've talked about, I think we've discussed, is the need for housing programs for those 15 to 17-year-olds, right? They're very independent, they need supervision and oversight. The state has a program called Transitional Housing Program for minors. There are many providers reluctant because they're minors, but it is there and we will continue trying to engage providers. And the other challenge is the state won't pay a rate for that, right? So when we place in a licensed facility, we get a foster care rate that then is matched by federal funds and they won't place that. They're, it's, it's not something they support. Uh, so it could be done with local funding, but we'll keep exploring that option because I think it could really help a number of, of kids out there right now.
Well, and just in generally, not necessarily on that particular line of questioning, but anything you come up with as ideas that we can do to give you more tools, I certainly would be willing to, to champion that with our folks over in the legislature. Uh, and then my last question is, and I don't say this to disparage, uh, the folks in our Sheriff's Department, but given that probation handles everything else having to do with juveniles, uh, did we explore partnering with them to provide security and/or that sort of law enforcement interface? And would there be any benefit to doing that?
Yeah, we did explore it and didn't, uh, see that there would be benefit. Um, so we are, we do have kids that are involved with both juvenile justice and us and child welfare. So sometimes their probation officers will come out to the welcome homes and engage with them. And, you know, sometimes the kids stand up a little straighter. Um, but, so we try to partner with probation as much as we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I thank you for this report, and I agree with the comments of my colleague that unfortunately, I feel a lot of the information in here was stale-dated and doesn't take into account all of the hard work that has been done by this department to get these homes stood up. Not an ideal situation, I don't think anything is ideal. Uh, they're coming out of tough situations and, and in some cases, don't have a lot of options as far as what's available to them. So, keep up the good work. And again, uh, Melissa, I, I just got to tell you, I don't know how you come to work with a smile on your face every day, but, but keep it up. Thank you for the work that you're doing. And thank you, Michelle.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So I'll close out the commentary here by, um, pile on with, um, you know, expression of gratitude to, uh, you, Michelle, and all your, um, your staff at DCFAS. And, um, you have one of the most difficult, um, jobs emotionally, quite frankly, I think in county service. Um, because you're, you know, you're charged with, um, you know, dealing with human nature as, in its almost rawest form, you know? And, um, you know, while I have been somewhat critical of kind of the grand jury structure as it relates to, uh, many of the concerns and criticisms that have already been expressed in terms of timeliness of reporting and that kind of thing, I do think the grand jury has provided a, a great service to us today because as you gain your, uh, presentation, you thanked them. So I'm gonna do the same thing and thank them for really giving you and us a platform to express what we are doing and how seriously we are taking the charge to, um, help our foster youth as best we can and, um, to not look to reinventing wheels. And, uh, the discussion about the kinship, improving the kinship, uh, program, uh, Family Connection, really stemmed from looking at LA, you know? And then kind of looking at ourselves and wondering, you know, how can we, uh, do things a lot better and, and really exploit in a good way, um, making sure that Families First is, uh, a centerpiece to, um, our placement, um, protocols. So, um, I want to thank the grand jury for, uh, giving us the opportunity this morning to, uh, hear from you. And, um, you know, outside of the occasional media report that typically, um, you know, is focused on a tragedy or, um, some deficiency, uh, I'm hopeful, since we have had, um, media presence here this morning on the subject, that it's clearly reported some of the great progress that we're making as well. I'm not suggesting we take a bow just yet, but, um, there's a lot of work to do, but we're doing it. And, uh, we're doing it for all the right reasons. So again, I want to thank you and everyone, uh, with, uh, DCFAS for what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisors. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do, we have two public comments. Mike Gilbert.
My name is Mike Gilbert. I am a social worker that actually works inside of the welcoming homes. There's just been a lot of misinformation this morning. Uh, first of all, we are not allowed to search the kids. We're not peace officers. If they come in and they don't want to be searched, we cannot search them. They can go back to their room and hide whatever they want, we can't. You notify law enforcement, they can't search them unless the kid's on searchable probation. That's how the drugs and the weapons get inside the welcoming homes. Regardless of what the Foster Youth Bill of Rights says, doesn't say that we can't provide security and protection to the facility. That's the one thing that, that's, that's the biggest problem, right? I was there the morning the kid was nearly beat to death. I was there the morning, uh, two guys came running in with guns looking to kill another little boy in there. That's the biggest issue. That's what we can address, regardless of what the lawmakers say and what the kids' rights are and are not. That's, that's, that's the biggest problem there. Um, you know, you guys are elected officials, you guys are, you know, where you are because your leaders and people believe in you. Our directors and our program managers are doing the best they can with the resources that they have. And their job is to plan and solve problems, so that's what they're gonna do with the best that they, with, with what they have. But the truth is, we need a facility. We have all these kids with all these different needs that we cannot support under one building. This one's got substance abuse, this one's, uh, CSAC, this one has severe mental illness. When you put them all together in one home, as if that's gonna be a solution, you're gonna have all kind of issues. Just like in a mental health hospital, where there are just some people that are gonna fight you, we have kids that are just gonna fight you. All the training and all that other kind, everybody in there's got degrees and has, has, uh, worked at other places and worked in groups, we've all got experience. Some of them like myself have been doing this for years. And it doesn't matter the training you got, you're gonna get some kids that are gonna fight you. They are gonna fight you if they don't get their way, right? And we find ourselves in situations all the time where it's, the solution is this kid's gonna get physical, right? This kid wants to take another kid in a room and you feel like that kid's gonna get assaulted, if you let it happen, the only way to stop this is, you're gonna have to get physical, like they do in some group homes, they had their hands on. And so the, the safety of the staff is just not there. The security of the facilities are just not there. Regardless of all the planning, regardless of what the law says, this particular population of foster youth are always gonna be there. And as long as they lay their head under a Sacramento County building, they should be safe. Safe from weapons coming in, safe from drugs. How many more kids are gonna come into our welcoming homes and come in with relatively mild problems and six months later, they're foreb blown prostitutes? Or they run away because they're scared that they're gonna get, uh, beat up or hurt? Stand up and fight for these kids, fight for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Villanueva, um, I, I don't intend to do a, a lot of, excuse me, thank you. I don't, you know, intend to do a lot of back and forth, but that was completely contradictory to what we just heard. Is there an explanation for that?
Um, I'd like to ask Michelle to come up, but, um, I have been talking with, uh, the UPE, uh, Director, Executive Director Ted, um, Ted?
Samara.
Samara, thank you. Um, we are working on, um, some additional solutions, so, um, I'll let Michelle answer some of these questions.
How about on this, I mean, just, because the specifics, like the, the searching thing, I mean, that, that was completely different than what we just heard.
Yes, and we are able to search youth belongings when they come in, as well as when they return from an elopement. And if we have suspicions that there's substances, I mean, sometimes it's blatant, kids will light up a joint, you know, we can, we can address that. We ask them to give it up. We're not gonna have our staff get in a fight over a joint. We ask them to smoke it outside. Um, if it is meth or a, a more severe substance, we obviously will bring in SAC sheriffs.
Okay.
Um, we, we, there was not somebody running through the homes with guns. There was a thorough investigation done and it, with all the neighbors that were interviewed, with the staff that were interviewed, there were not weapons being carried. In the nine months or 10 months that we've been operating, there was one identification of a gun, which was a replica. And then in a separate incident, a magazine of ammunition with no weapon, um, attached to it. Mike is right, this is a tough job. And I think they're doing tremendously in, in working with these youth. They are our responsibility, they are under our care and supervision. So we don't get to say, no, you can't stay here because, uh, you're too difficult. This is just our obligation and our staff are doing an amazing job and working through it. And we will continue to hear, uh, from them and, and address concerns.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle, appreciate that. Supervisor Desmond?
And, and just very quickly, Michelle, and I'm sure this is the case, but I just want to reiterate and make sure those lines of communications with kind of the boots on the ground in the homes and management, that, that continues in, in terms of issues, dealing with the, the safety of staff, safety in the kids. Sometimes those may be mutually exclusive, sometimes they may be complementary. But I think it's also important for us to, you know, Supervisor Hume talked about trying to influence, um, legislation at the state level, to, to bring those to the attention of our state legislators. And if that means some legislative changes need to be made, so we have better tools, then I think it's important to identify those and, and, and bring that to our attention in our advocacy, advocacy efforts as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Tezra Sledge.
I'm a UPE business agent, and I've been listening to everything that's been said this morning about the welcome homes. Um, first of all, I do believe that the grand jury report should have been titled Invisible Welcome Home Staff, Does Anybody Care? In response to finding number two, yes, there was a consultant that was hired, um, but the training to the welcome home staff is not being done by these consultants, it's being done by management that was sent to the training. Um, and to date, there's been no restraint training that has taken place. I do understand that these youth have had a tough go at life. However, my concern as a UPE business agent are my members and their safety, and that is just not happening. There are line security on site, but their job is to observe and report. Um, some do get involved when there are altercations, but many do not. I've heard from our members that the line of security that are on scene sometimes, when they take their breaks and their meal periods are out in their car smoking marijuana and then coming back in the house. How does that help? Please tell me. Um, when the sheriff is called, when there are illegal substances there, there are many times that the sheriff will not take the substance. I've had members tell me that the sheriff has told them to instead flush the substance down the toilet, which is against the law. You cannot do that. The drugs that come in, the weapons that come in, are being put outside of the windows, the bedroom windows, inside or on their person. Sometimes the youth will allow the staff to search them, many times they will not. And the response is, F you, I can do what I want, I can, you're not gonna do anything. How does that send a message to the staff that you guys, right, their employer, is protecting them? That their safety is a priority? Where is that? Is that gonna come from you? Because it's not coming from the department. And it seems to be a culture that is passed down, right, from the top all the way down, where labor is just not, and it's, it's not a priority. And I would hope that Mr. Gilbert, who has spoke here last time, doesn't continue to receive the retaliation that he has been receiving on his job for speaking out in front of you guys and telling his truth. There's no way that you can debunk him saying that there were no guns when he was present.
Can you wrap up, Tezra?
Again, I would ask that you guys look at the safety of the staff, because that is not happening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that's our last public comment?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Uh, I will move staff recommendation. What?
I'm sorry. I didn't submit a card to speak, but can I do that now?
If you'll come to the podium, yes, and then provide the card, that would be helpful. You have two minutes.
Yes, good morning. Um, yeah, I, I provided a card to speak earlier, so you do have my information. Um, yeah, I just wanted to echo-
Can you sign up a new card? Because I, I don't remember your name, so if you could-
Sandy.
If you could do a new card and then they'll add you into, for this item.
Okay. Yeah, 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 no worries. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, say that the report was really good and very well-organized and structured. Um, so I wanted to comment on that first. And then things that came to mind were, um, just wondering if you guys understand what the roots of the problems are for these kids. Um, it's like we're trying to put a Band-Aid on, on a problem, which, you know, you need Band-Aids, but at the same time, you want to discover what the root of the, of the issue is so that you can address that. Um, I was gonna comment too about the training that was spoken about in the report. I just don't know if there's ways to assess how, um, successful the trainings are, um, so that you can follow that and then maybe modify trainings. Um, and then the other comment, uh, was on the state. Um, I think I heard you guys say something about, um, being, you're like feeling like your hands are tied because of what the state is saying to do. Um, so I'm just wondering, is there, um, are there people, is there a group of individuals that represent the board that go and advocate for Sacramento County, uh, at the legislative- represent the board that go and advocate for Sacramento County at the legislative levels so that they can make modifications as necessary for these things? And then just as a resident, I'm very concerned about the disparity between the report and what the employees are stating. And it's very concerning to hear that people are concerned about their safety, and I can see how that could happen with the personalities that tend to be found in this, in the children that, that have to use these services. So, those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sandy. Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. I just wanted to address a couple of questions that came up from the supervisors related to the work of the state or the, the changes that the state has done. Our legislative advocate has been working with both CSAC and directly with our legislative delegates. We'll continue to work on those things. They're the ones who put the current environment. They're not inclined to necessarily change it, but that doesn't stop us from trying. So I just wanted to show the board that we continue to push on the legislative side. And I've personally talked to various legislators about this, and they're pledging their support, but we're, we're making little progress, but we're, we continue to work on it.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
If there's no further comment, I'd like to move the item.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, thank you very much. Now we have, we're on to items 34 through 39. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read those into the record, and we will hold a separate vote on each and a public hearing on each.
Okay, so for items 34 through 39, this is the hearing to lien delinquent solid waste service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent solid waste service charges be collected on the property tax roll. For item 35, hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll. 36, hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges for the city of Citrus Heights and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drain service charges be collected on the property tax roll. 37, hearing to lien delinquent storm drainage service charges for the city of Rancho Cordova and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent storm drainage service charges be collected on the property tax roll. 38, hearing to lien delinquent utility taxes and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility taxes be collected on the property tax roll. And 39, you're acting as a Sacramento County Water Agency, hearing to lien delinquent water service charges and adoption of resolution ordering delinquent utility water use service charges be collected on the property tax roll.
Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, just before we hear from staff, Ms. Chair, just like to point out, this sequence of items, I think underscores the breadth of what we do in county service.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. Chad Rindi, Director of Finance for Sacramento County, presenting items 34 through 39. As Will mentioned, these contain delinquent utility charges that are collected by our consolidated utility billing division. We're required to have a public hearing to enroll these onto the tax bills. Each utility customer was notified, both through several delinquent utility bills as well as notices, that these charges would be enrolled onto their tax bill. And the board adopted a resolution of intent to hold this public hearing on June 11th. Customers still have time until August 23rd to pay or resolve their delinquent utility bills in order to avoid those being enrolled onto the tax bill and collected with their property taxes. Item 34 is delinquent solid waste charges, which includes 8,079 accounts for the amount of $4,309,732. Item 35 is storm drainage charges, which includes 8,250 accounts and the dollar amount of $694,458. Item 36 is delinquent storm drainage charges we collect on behalf of Citrus Heights. That includes 1,249 accounts and the dollar amount of 113,848. Item 37 is storm drainage charges we collect on behalf of City of Rancho Cordova, which contains 990 accounts and the amount of $85,530. Item 38 is delinquent utility taxes. That includes 12,239 accounts and the amount of $190,000. And then we, $190,143. Item 39 is delinquent water charges on behalf of the Sacramento County Water Agency. That is 2,425 accounts and the dollar amount of $1,948,723. We expect these counts will go down as people do try to resolve their delinquent utility accounts before we do enroll them in the tax, property tax bills. And this item gives me authority to work with those customers as needed. Thank you for your consideration today and happy to answer any questions on any of these items.
Okay, I see no questions from the board. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There are no public comments.
No public comment at this time, then I'm going to open the public hearing for item 34. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time on item number 34? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and take a motion.
So moved.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Item 35, seeing no comments from the board, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on item 35 at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
So moved.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Item 36, I see no comments from the board, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time on item 36? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
So moved.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right. Item 37, hearing and seeing no comments from the board, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on item 37 at this time? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
So moved.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Item 38, hearing and seeing no comments from the board, I will open the public hearing. At this time, is there any one member of the public that would like to address the board on item 38? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
So moved.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
And item 39, hearing and seeing no comments from the board, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time on item 39? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion.
So moved.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
For item 40, you're acting as a Sacramento County Water Agency. This is the proposed rate increases for Sacramento County Water Agency Zone 41 Water Service.
Good morning. Matt Sato, Director of Water Resources, Agency Engineer for the Sacramento County Water Agency. The item we have for you this morning is for the rate study for Zone 41 and potential rate increases. Just a little bit about Sacramento County Water Agency. We serve over 65,000 customers throughout Sacramento County. We produce over 40 million gallons of water a day for these customers. We deliver this through over 70 groundwater wells and also a conjunctive use system of drawing water from the Sacramento River. Just to give you, orient you, Zone 41 covers a wide area of Sacramento County. You can see a majority of the light blue area, which is Zone 41, is south of the American River. We do cover areas as well up near Metro Air Park, up in North Gate area, and then down in the Hood area as well. So really objectives, we have three primary objectives of this rate study and goal. One is, you know, we really tried to minimize the impacts to our customers, understanding, keeping our rates affordable and only charging them the money that's needed in order to keep our agency sustainable. And that's the second goal, is really looking at the sustainability of the agency. That's really what has to be the primary goal. And the last one is, the agency has previous debt from infrastructure that's put in, and there's future debt that needs to be taken out as well to cover that. All these things need to be taken into account in the rate study. So our rate study process, we hired a consultant, Raftellis, who's here with us today as well. They really helped us with five things, or four things so far. One of them was just saying the framework of the overall study. Two, what probably one of the more important things was running us through and developing the financial plan for the agency over the next 10 years. And then from that, really looking at and designing the rate structure to match all those goals we talked about, as well as looking at the regulatory part of this, and we'll talk a little more about that in a minute. And then finally, providing this study as part of this report to the board and action. The last part they haven't helped us with, they're working on right now, and that's through the rate adoption process over the next few months. So when I say regulatory, one of the primary things that drives this rate study is complying with California Proposition 218. Without getting into the entire proposition, we'll cover just some of the highlights of things we have to comply with. One is that the revenues cannot exceed the funds required to provide the service. Secondly, the revenues cannot be used for any other purpose other than to pay for the service which is charged. The third is the amount of the fee cannot exceed the proportional cost of providing that service. And then finally, the charges cannot be imposed unless the service is actually used or immediately available. So that's really one of the primary drivers of developing this overall fee, fee study. So when you look at overall our fee over the last 10 years, you'll see that really over the last four or five years in particular, our last rate increase was actually in July 1st of 2019. And that was effective through July 1st, 2019 to July 1st, 2020, which means we've gone the last four years with, without a rate increase. We've kept it at zero. And you may wonder, how have we done that? Well, really, what the agency has done through that time period, we've held on to a lot of vacancies. We've held back on hiring, keeping a lot of positions vacant. We've also, probably one of the primary things, is we've really held back on our capital improvement program in delivering projects. We've delayed a lot of projects that are needed. We've been able to do that, and I call those, really those are Band-Aids for the most part, because we'll get into some of the things that are driving the increases now. But one of the primary ones, as you know, over the last four years, inflation has increased. The CPI has gone up, Consumer Price Index has gone up 21% over the last four years alone. That is one of the drivers. And then also, the other driver comes from the California, from the state and the federal side, what's driving the rate increases. So with that, the rate study had to look at what do we need to increase rates to achieve those goals of, again, trying to minimize the cost to ratepayers, but also making sure that the agency is financially sustainable. And so that's gonna require an immediate increase of 17% in the first year, and second year, 8%, and then 7% for the following three years after that. So I mentioned before some of the things that are driving the rate increase. Inflation certainly is one that we're all very well aware of. The other things I mentioned before is, is that the borrowing assumptions on the debt that we have now, as well as any future debt that we take out, requires that we have, not only on the revenue side, we maintain certain revenues, but also our cash balances to maintain this ratio to, to stay eligible for, for the loans that we have out right now. So that is also another important thing. And then, as I mentioned before, one of the primary drivers for us is really the requirements on the state and federal side. The state, between the regulations on the state and federal, it really has increased our costs of doing business and delivering water for the, for the people of Sacramento So talking just more about the regulatory drivers, just, these are just a few of them in particular. One of them is recently, the California Area Resources Board has a Clean Fleets Regulation. This requires us, as of this year, to buy all of our, excuse me, half of our new vehicles purchases have to be clean fleets, meaning either hydrogen or electric power. That certainly increases the cost of purchasing the vehicles, but also the, the unknown cost of the infrastructure required to either charge or refuel these vehicles goes along with that. California Assembly Bill 2572 is not new, but we are still in the process of being in conformance, coming in conformance with that, and that requires all of our connections to be metered. It's very expensive to do that as well. You're hearing more about this in the news these days, and that's the polyfluorally alcohol substances, more commonly called PFOS. You're hearing this at the federal level. We just received federal regulation this year on, on the allowable limits of this, which went, went back and tested all 70-plus of our groundwater wells, and actually took 10% of our wells out of production as a result of that. The state is preparing to come back with their standards on this. We're assuming it's gonna be equal or greater than what the fed, federal government has already imposed on us. But right now, we're working on trying to come up with cost-effective solutions to treat those wells and put them back in operation. But none of those are gonna be very, they're, all those options are gonna be expensive to do that treatment. And then the final one is, just came in within the last few weeks, California enacted the Making Conservation a California Way of Life. And that's wonderful, that we're, we're certainly looking at different conservation measures in California, but as an agency, as a business, what that does to us is it creates a lot more reporting. It's gonna create a lot more effort on our part to actually staff programs to comply with this regulation on us. So these are some of the drivers on the state and federal regulatory side that are driving the cost of doing business for us. So when you look at this rate increase over the first year, though, I want to give you kind of an idea of how much is this really going to affect our ratepayers? And so when you look at this, most of the bills, so 55% of our customers, are gonna see an increase of less than $5 a month. There's, and this is all based off of water usage and, and historical billing. Another 25% of our users who are kind of in that low-middle category are gonna see between $5 and $10 a month increase. And then the higher users, 15% of the bills are gonna, going to increase between $10 and $20 a month. And extremely high users, which would primarily be on the commercial side, are gonna see an increase of more than $20 a month on their bills. When you look at this on just a typical one-inch.
Hang on, Matt.
Sure.
Supervisor Desmond.
Matt, thank you. Last slide, you go back to that last slide if you don't mind. So just, I just want to make it clear that this is based primarily on usage, so presumably then, if someone adjusts their, their usage, maybe conserves a little more, they won't see as high an increase in their bill.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that these are not static numbers for every ratepayer in that district.
No, and these are looking back at, again, historical usage of our users and the typical bills. Most of our users, as shown in this, 55% of them are gonna fall in what we call the low to, to medium-low category as far as usage, which is just a normal usage on that end. And then you're gonna, that covers 80% of the users, and then the, the rest of the 20% beyond that fall within that 15%, 4% area there that, that really are the higher-end users. But yes, you are correct, it's gonna depend on usage. So, so looking at just a typical residential one-inch meter, again, most of the folks are gonna fall between the two bar categories on the left there, just on the usage, and that's where you're gonna see the, anywhere from less than $5 a month, five or less per month of increase. That middle category does fall, you know, for the, call it average medium user, a little over $6.50 a month, and then the higher users on the other end. That's measured 8 CF, by the way, is 100 cubic feet. That's how we typically measure. I know it's very hard to visualize that, but.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you. Matt, I just wanted to ask a question on that last slide, because you say the, you use one inch as the average. Is that a typical detached, single-family home?
Yes, for residential, correct.
And so then on attachment one, on residential, it starts at 3/4 inches and goes up to 10 inches. Is that accounting for like multifamily and that type of?
Yes.
Higher density?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So this is another important, I think, graphic, just to give you an idea relative to other water purveyors in the region. We have 25-plus water purveyors in the Sacramento region, but in looking just at the region, where we are today is on the far left there. That's where our current rates are today in comparison. We are on the, much towards the lower end of what is charged typically in this region. With the rate increase, we're still gonna be not even to the middle, we'll be to the middle-left of that in comparison to other water purveyors in the region, which for us, again, I think is validation of the work we've done over the last four years to really try to rein in our costs and control that, as well as really keeping, with our goal of keeping this water rates as affordable as possible for our residents. We're not a for-profit agency. So as part of this effort, we're gonna be doing some public outreach with this. The first one there, if the board approves and directs us to do so today, within the next few days, we'll be sending out a mailer to all of our customers, which will detail, in much more detail what I presented today, but it'll give you the complete information on the rate study, as well, and the basis for it, and how this would impact them. After that, we'll also are enacting a special webpage for this, which is gonna have even more information on there, as well as the actual rate study that people can see. The other thing too, I want to mention, is that we do have a ratepayer assistance program, and we follow SMUDS qualifications to qualify folks, whether they qualify into this program or not. It provides up to $84 a year of assistance to, to folks on their bills. And so that is something that we're gonna put front and center on our webpage, as well as the special webpage is dedicated to the rate increase on this. We're gonna use social media to get the word out again about the rate increase, about the, the public hearing date, and more information about that. the public hearing date, and more information about that. And then we're asking the board to set a hearing date of September 10th to enact those So for us, I just kind of went over roughly, but again, the mailer will be sent out within a few days if directed so today. Over the next few months, we're doing our public outreach, public hearing, we'd set for September 10th, and then the ordinance would actually be adopted two weeks after the public hearing, which would be on September 24th. With implementing the rates, the first rate increase would happen on November 1st, and then after that, the subsequent rates would happen on July 1st of each year after that. So today, it's in the staff report, but just reiterate, the recommended board action today is to direct staff to proceed with the preliminary actions necessary to comply with the legal requirements, to approve the proposed rates and rate study, enact the Zone 41 water rate increases as shown in the report, and then also on the screen there, with the first rate increase this year on November 1st for fiscal year '24-'25 at 17%, '25-'26 for 8%, '26-'27 for 7%, '27-'28, 7%, and '28-'29, 7%. Authorize staff to mail out the mailer that I just discussed, to comply with Proposition 218 rate adoption process, and then also set the public hearing date for September 10th to count the valid protests and rate changes and majority protests of the property owners, and consider adoption of the rate increase. So with that, certainly open up any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to be crystal clear on that process that you just outlined. Essentially, our action today is affirming that we believe you're giving us good information, and that we agree with your methodology, and that the proposed rate increases that you have suggested are what it will take in order to meet that financial sustainability goal.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, but the ratepayers will still have the opportunity to object, and then that's what will be considered on the 10th of September?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying that, Supervisor Hume. I think that's important for the public to know, for the ratepayers to know. And I know a lot of water districts are, you know, obviously looking at increased rates, not only because of the PFAS issue, but because of the new conservation measures that are going to be coming online. The chart that you showed about where Sacramento County SCWA will stand after the rate increase, was that after just year one, or after?
That's just after year one.
That's just after year one, okay.
Yes, and I think the thing with that, too, is that it's relative, right? I could show it for multiple years, but other agencies will likely be moving forth rate increases during those years as well. So in the end, I have a feeling we're going to end up in the same spot. Everyone just would move relative.
Okay, thank you, Matt. And that was kind of my next question. I mean, you're seeing, obviously, a lot of these jurisdictions that you highlight there, they're going to be going through this same process. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I see no more questions, or do we have any public comment?
We do not have anyone signed up.
All right. Is there a motion? Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Thank you. Next item, please.
For item 41, this is the Garcia Rivera Project Development Agreement, development agreement between the County of Sacramento and RDS Capital Builders LLC, related to the Garcia Rivera subdivision, a property located at 7361 Bradshaw Road, and this is in the Florin Road, in the, excuse me, in the Vineyard Community. And the environmental document is an addendum to a prior mitigated negative declaration.
Hello, Chair Kennedy, members of the board. Emma Patton, senior planner here this morning to present the Garcia Rivera Development Agreement. I do have a presentation. So the Garcia Rivera project is located on a 10-acre parcel that's currently vacant. The parcel is located east of Bradshaw Road, about a half-mile south of the intersection of Florin Road in the Vineyard Community. This parcel is also located within the North Vineyard Station specific plan area. Here you can see the Garcia Rivera tentative subdivision map. It includes about 70 single-family residential lots and some other lots that are supporting that development. The map is set to expire on May 23rd, 2024. That date has since passed. However, this application for the development agreement was submitted prior to that expiration date, making this project eligible for the development agreement and the associated extension being requested today. Pursuant to the proposed development agreement, the developer would now be required to participate in the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, including compliance with avoidance and minimization measures, and the payment of mitigation fees. Additionally, the extension of the map maintains security of the funding agreed to under a separate agreement that this board approved in 2023, which would fund the design and environmental review and the right-of-way acquisition costs associated with various transportation improvements within the North Vineyard Station specific plan. In return, the county would extend the life of the Garcia Rivera map by 10 years, which would be the equivalent to the term of the development agreement itself. This would result in an expiration date of May 15th, 2034. In addition, the county agrees to work expeditiously in processing and reviewing complete applications for amendments to the Garcia Rivera project. The Garcia Rivera project is one of several maps east of Bradshaw. Some are approved, others are currently working their way through the application process. Entering into this development agreement gives additional time to record this map, and will ultimately result in drainage improvement, in several infrastructure improvements, including drainage improvements, new electrical transmission lines required by SMUD, and expansion of sanitary sewer connection, amongst other improvements. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the original Garcia Rivera tentative map, which was approved in 2006. For this development agreement, an addendum to that mitigated negative declaration was The Vineyard CPAC met in May of this year to consider this proposal. They voted 3 yes, 0 no, with 1 absent to recommend approval. The planning commission later met on June 10th, 2024, and also unanimously recommended approval of the development agreement with the members present. Based on these recommendations, and as the Garcia Rivera map can act as a catalyst for development of some of the other approved and pending maps east of Bradshaw, staff recommends approval of this development agreement. I am available for any questions you might have. I'll also note that the applicant representative, Dan Cucci, is also in attendance this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no board member has questions. Is there any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item, please.
Okay, for item 43, this is your appointments. Oh, am I jumping ahead? Sorry about that. Sorry, my apology. Item 42 is the County Service Area Number 1, Zone 1, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for the Empowerment Park Project.
Good morning, members of the board. Dawn Cavendish with County Engineering. Okay, the Empowerment Park Project is located on the southeast corner of Bell Street and Irma Way, and consists of the development of a new community park within the Mission Oaks Recreation and Parks District. This project was approved with a special development permit and design review on May 10th, 2021. In response to the project's conditions of approval required prior towards the building permit issuance, the project proponents submitted an application requesting the initiation of the benefit category change process. Notices and protest ballots were mailed to property owners on June 7th of 2024. Currently, of the three parcels, one parcel is in the safety-light-only benefit category and is assessed $2.56 annually. The remaining two parcels in the street and safety-light non-residential category, and combined, are assessed $21.50 annually. After the benefit category changes to the enhanced street and safety-light non-residential, an increased annual service charge will be approximately $537.28 for the three parcels, 527 feet of frontage, which will be collected only after acceptance of the newly-installed street lighting equipment. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider written and oral testimony, and objections and protests, and then close the public hearing and direct the board, the clerk, to tabulate the returned protest ballots.
Thank you. Seeing no questions from the board, I will open up the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on this item at this time?
We have no comments signed up yet.
I will close the public hearing. Would the clerk please tabulate the returned protest ballot?
Yeah, I received two ballots. Protest ballot for County Service Area 1, benefit category change from SMUD, parcel number 2850221001 on 1124 Bell Street, and they are in favor. And opening the second ballot. Okay, this is from Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District on 2850280040 and 041, site address on Clinton Road, Sacramento, California 95825, and they are in favor.
Thank you. Please read any changes into the record.
Thank you. In Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board received 0 oral and written protests, which the board finds and determines to not constitute a majority protest. At the close of Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board received 2 protest ballots totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition to the change of the benefit category.
Thank you.
Chair, I enthusiastically move approval.
Awesome. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Next item, please.
For item 43, this is your appointments from your own ranks to the first five Sacramento Commission. It looks like Supervisor Serna is the member, and Supervisor Kennedy is the alternate, and the term is expiring on July 30th, 2024.
Okay, is there any questions, comments from the board? If not, I will move staff recommendation. No members of the public, I take it?
We have no comments.
Thank you. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, so we're reappointing there for two-year term.
Okay, let's go ahead and take 44 in our nominations, and then we'll, if there's any additional public members that want to address an item not on the agenda, we'll take it at that point.
Okay, awesome. So for item 44, you're continuing to August 20th. Disability Advisory Commission, Elk Grove Casanus Cemetery District, Human Services Coordinating Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, and the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, continuing to September 4th, Building Board of Appeals, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Galt Arno Cemetery District, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Board, North Highlands Foothill Farms, Community Planning Advisory Council, the Sylvan Cemetery District, and the Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council. Your first item is the Community Review Commission.
District 1 would like to reappoint John Stoller and waive the process.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Casanus Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost. I mean, sorry, she's not here. And I have a note to continue to September 4th, and then Supervisor Hume.
Please continue to August 20th.
Thank you. Pharaoh Cemetery District.
Please continue to August 6th.
Thank you. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council.
It's Frost.
And so there is a request here to waive the process, so can someone make that motion?
Who's the?
Donald Russell.
I'll make that motion.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Public Health Advisory Board.
Please continue to August 20th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to August 20th.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to August 6th.
And Supervisor Hume.
Please continue to August 20th.
All right, thank you. Sacramento County Employees Retirement System Board of Retirement.
Reappoint Kevin DeVore and waive the process.
Second.
And.
We'll take this one first.
Oh.
And then reappoint Ronald Suter and waive the process.
Second.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Please continue to September 4th.
Thank you. Sacramento County Youth Commission. We'll start with District 2, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to September 4th.
Gotcha. Okay, Mr. Desmond.
Continue to September 4th.
And I have a note here for Supervisor Frost to continue to August 6th. Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to September 4th.
Thank you. Sunrise Recreation and Park District, I have a note to continue to September the 4th for Supervisor Frost. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, then at this time, we will take any members of the public who would like to address the board on items not on the agenda, who did not have an opportunity to speak earlier.
My name is Ryan Robuck. I'm a deputy district attorney, and I am the treasurer of the Sacramento County's Attorney Association. What I'd like to highlight for the board this morning is essentially the unfair practices that have been happening against us. As it currently stands with our contract, we're being asked to wait, to have our requests, to have the things that our neutral fact-finder found in our favor essentially shelved until our next contract, which comes due in June of 2025. Now, the question that all of us are asking ourselves, and the question that I hope the board is also asking itself, is why would we wait that long? The neutral fact-finder, Mr. Yuval Miller, found in his report that you all are in possession of, a number of undisputed facts, and specifically the timeline of events that took place in this contract negotiation. What he found was undisputed by your own labor personnel, was that it was our union that attempted to negotiate approximately 10 months prior to our contract expiring, purposely to avoid any delays or back pay issues, to address specific concerns of our contract needs. We sent a request in September of 2021 and October of 2021 to begin those negotiations, and we didn't hear back from the county until March of 2022. At that point, your labor staff and us set our first meeting in April, where an aggressive schedule was set. Thereafter, in May of 2022, we came to the table ready to negotiate. We had our first salary survey. Your labor negotiators didn't bring anything. That continued on into June of 2022, weeks before our contract was to expire, when your negotiators presented us with little more than a veiled request to take what was the COLA adjustment for everyone that was provided to the county.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Robuck?
What I ask all of you to consider is why would our members continue to wait for another year to address concerns that have been proven by a neutral fact-finder to be in our favor? Please consider our request.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rod Simpson. I'm an Attorney 5 with the Sacramento County Public Defender's Office. I've been employed with Sacramento County for almost 20 years. I have sat through a number of these negotiations in that 20 years, and we've never seen anything like this. From the start, it appears that the county has acted in bad faith. The county has made a no-equity offer, CSCAA, in May of 2022, before even creating a salary survey. It was clear the county had already decided not to give us a raise before evaluating our position in the market. And then when the county eventually did produce a survey, it looks like the county manipulated the classification and data to support their predetermined conclusions that we were already at the market average. All of these adjustments to the survey were rejected by the fact-finder because they were incorrect. Compare what the board did for department heads and other unrepresented job classifications. The board commissioned a salary study by Ralph Anderson and Associates to not only determine if raises were appropriate for these classifications, but, per the report, to optimize the county's ability to recruit and retain employees. Those surveys commissioned by this board specifically note that compensation surveys are a necessary part of assessing and updating an organization's compensation plan. Interestingly, this survey used the mean instead of the median when asserting. Interestingly, this survey used the mean instead of the median when asserting, when assessing the market and set the rate at 75% instead of 50% of the market. For the SCAA, the county offered us no equity increase, prior to even attempting a salary survey, and continues to offer us no equity increase despite losing at fact-finding and despite a salary survey that does support an equity increase. Moreover, labor granted department heads 80 hours of vacation that must be used annually or cashed out. This was a proposal SCAA made for our contract. We were willing to accept less equity in exchange for additional vacation hours, but the county categorically rejected this.
Can you wrap up, Mr. Simpson?
Certainly. It's another example of the county's unreasonable stance and a showing of a lack of good faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Jones.
My name is Kevin Jones. Work for the DA's office here in Sacramento. I've been here for 20 years. I supervise one of our felony trial teams. Good morning, Mr. Supervisor Desmond. I'm a 20-year resident in your district. I'm frustrated by labor's dissent to the fact-finding mission, where they categorize, essentially, the association as being bullies. Our hard bargaining on salary, hard uncompromising positions in our negotiations, we are frustrated with that characterization, and you should be as well, because that fact-finder was very clear as to who used bully tactics. The panel found retroactive pay more than a fair exchange for the eight months the county was non-responsive, failed to respond with the survey, and refused to negotiate. And it is the county, and this is a quote from the finder, "The county that in 2022 acted consistently with a perverse incentive and gained a $1.5 million windfall. The evidence does not show any ethical basis for the county to retain the cost savings from a half-year failure to respond." They also found, and I will quote, and I know if you've read it, which you have, you will remember this quote, "The county contends that it should be able to use its own delay that prejudiced SCAA's ability to negotiate as leverage to extract concessions from SCAA." They labeled several of the county's arguments as unreasonable and untenable. So the panel concluded with a hard sentence in that section. "The panel cannot approve a bargaining tactic that permits the county to extract concessions from overworked employees by delaying negotiations. You shouldn't allow that either. So if there were bullying tactics being used, it was not by the overworked employees." Thank you.
Thank you.
We're no longer morning. My name is Megan Gannon. I have been assistant public defender for now 22 years. I'm a principal attorney with the office. I supervise the misdemeanor intake unit. There's eight attorneys under me. Only one of them have more than a year's experience. I think there's two reasons we can't retain attorneys at both our office and the district attorney's office, and that is quality of life and that is salary. When you talk about the work-life balance, a law enforcement officer will tell you, "I'm there on the worst day of somebody's life," whether that's a client, whether that's their family, whether that's a victim, whether that's their family. And that is 100% true. It is the worst day of their life. And then they come to us, and then they come to the DA's office. And that trauma, that worst day of their life, isn't a couple of hours with that cop's. It's weeks, months, and years with us. Trauma that we relive with them daily. And we relive that trauma when we're at dinner with our families. We suffer with that trauma when we're on vacation, because it never stops. And it's why we bleed attorneys to your county council. They don't suffer with that trauma. It's why we lose people to the state. It's why we lose people to civil practice. They don't have to live with that trauma. And the second is the salary. You saddled us with Paulino Duran. You saddled us with Steve Garrett. We finally have a decent leadership that can turn our office around and make it better, but we can't get qualified, good attorneys because the salary's not comparable. We will never fix that work-life balance. We can't get a county council attorney to come back to us ever. That will never happen. Why would they give up that cush job to deal with the trauma we deal with? We need the salaries to be comparable. We need to get people to come to us from Placer, from Solano. We just had an attorney quit on Monday, who'd been with the office for four years, who had decades of experience, and he said it was salary. Please break this impasse.
Okay.
My name is Kimberly Miller, and I am a principal attorney with the Public Defender's Office. I've been with the office for about 16 years. I've been on the hiring committee for the Public Defender's Office since fall of 2021. And since then, until spring of this year, we've done over 100 interviews. Of those 100 interviews, 25% of those attorneys have more than one year's experience. We are simply not competitive. We cannot bring and draw in competitive, skilled attorneys for both offices. The board has a vested interest in the Public Defender's Office and the DA's office to be competitive, to draw in the best candidates, because those are your future voter base. The Sacramento County Giving Campaign, our office, the Public Defender's Office, and the District Attorney's Office are the highest contributors. If we can bring in skilled, top candidates, they are the ones that buy homes, that contribute to your campaigns, that put their childrens in our public schools. They are the ones that stay in this community. Both offices put a premium on community outreach, on us giving back community service. Those are the types of people that we need to bring into our offices, and we can't. We are not even remotely competitive with counties like Contra Costa, San Diego, Alameda. And I list those specifically because our office has extended offers to attorneys who have said, "No, thank you, I'm going to go there." Because if a person is willing to relocate to come to Sacramento, they are applying to Alameda, they're applying to Contra Costa, they are applying to San Francisco, and we simply cannot compete. Once upon a time, the cost of living here was able to offset perhaps the fact that we didn't pay as much as some of those counties, but that's not true anymore. The cost of living here has simply made it that we cannot bring in qualified candidates unless our salaries are competitive with those counties.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Singh is currently in the StasiO death penalty trial. He stepped out for a moment. I'd ask to roll him to the end of this.
That's, that's fine. That's fine. Paul Gomez.
Yes. Good afternoon, boards of supervisors. My name is Paul Gomez. I've lived in District One since 2004. I've been a public defender since 2004. Before the massive turnover in my office, typically attorneys would complete between 16 and 26 jury trials before they ever touched a felony. Now, they only have six to eight before they have to be moved on to make room for the newbies behind them. So in response to that, and in response to the May's decree, we have set up a preliminary hearing unit, where we take, where we try to train up our misdemeanor attorneys and make them ready to handle felonies. There are, I have a supervisor, I am a lead, we have about eight newbie attorneys that we're training up. These attorneys, within the case being set for preliminary hearing, they do the preliminary hearing, they do an OR or bail motion, and oftentimes, they succeed in getting people out of custody, relieving the pressure on the jail. Sometimes during these adversarial proceedings, we are able to get the judge to reduce the felony to a misdemeanor, which also lowers the bail, gets these people out of custody. We are doing our job to reduce the pressure on the jail. How are we doing this? It requires a tremendous amount of supervision, an amount of supervision that I did not have when I was coming up, because I did about 20 misdemeanor trials before I ever touched a felony. We are, me and my supervisor, we are reading the police reports, we're going through their questions, we are sitting there in the prelims, watching them do the prelims. I am often texting them suggestions mid-prelim. We read through their transcripts with them after we mark them up, and then we read through their files. So we are ensuring that the public receives effective assistance from counsel from their public defender's office. But it requires a tremendous amount of supervision to make that happen. We have trainings almost every week for them. So, this unit has only been in existence for 18 months. One former member left after he graduated. We lost one member mid-rotation. Two people who were scheduled to join our unit left.
Can you wrap up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is, my time, the time that I should be spending trying trials, that I'm doing, doing training, is a waste of government and taxpayer money. Those people that we train, we should retain. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hightower.
My name is Jeff Hightower. I have been a deputy district attorney for 23 years, and I've been a resident of District Three for over 20 years. I'm currently assigned as the supervising deputy district attorney for the Justice Training and Integrity, or JTI, unit since February 2020. Despite that, I continue to be a trial lawyer as well. In 2023, I tried the four murders committed by Salvador Vasquez Oliva, including the murders of his 14-year-old daughter and 11-year-old son. This fall, I will be trying Adel Ramos for the murder of Officer Tara O'Sullivan and the attempted murders of six additional peace officers. The JTI unit's primary focus is post-conviction litigation, which has proliferated over the last several years. We reexamined murder convictions, we review cases for conviction integrity and actual innocence, and we perform numerous resentencings as required by the changes in law. 10 years ago, JTI consisted of two attorneys. Five years ago, JTI had six attorneys, only two of which were senior. Now it is the largest unit in the DA's office, with 14 attorneys, five of which are senior. And the same is true in the Public Defender's Office. Even so, the JTI workload is so high that some of the post-conviction litigation spills over to original trial attorneys, attorneys that continue to manage full trial caseloads of their own. The bulk of JTI's growth did not come as a result of extra allocated attorney staffing. Instead, we have pilfered frontline trial attorneys from other units to staff, including homicides, major crimes, sexual assaults, which has correspondingly led to higher caseloads for the remaining attorneys in those units. Obviously, the reforms that have led to these changes in the enormous workload are not the responsibility of this board. However, it is the result of our modern-day criminal justice system. Workflow has exploded in both the DA's and Public Defender's Office. The increase in workloads while refusing to compensate people fairly and equitably is not sustainable for the attorneys, the offices, or the county. The attorneys in this room and in those buildings who have devoted their lives and their careers to justice and public safety deserve better. The citizens of this county, who we represent, deserve better. I appreciate the time that you've given me. I hope you intervened to end the impasse and give us the fair compensation outlined in the report.
Thank you.
My name is Maria Wilson. I'm a principal attorney at the DA's office. I've been there 16 years. I'm currently assigned to our homicide unit doing trials, but I've been the misdemeanor jury, jury trial unit supervisor from 2022 to 2024. I've also served on the hiring committee for five to six years. I echo the frustration that so many others have voiced, and in particular, the issue of retention. The bottom line is, this is our community, this is your community. We need the best of the best to represent those who've been accused of crimes, and we need the best of the best to be in the courtroom trying those charges, holding people accountable for their crimes. Right now, currently, 40%, almost 40% of our office has less than five years' experience. Conversely, members who've been in our office for 11 to 15 years, which are kind of your prime trial years, that number has dwindled to 7%. This has resulted in a vicious cycle where we are having to advance brand-new attorneys with very limited experience, sometimes as few as three misdemeanor trials, up to a felony caseload, serious felony charges with high caseloads. They suffer a crisis of confidence because they're not doing well, they're going over there not prepared, there's been no time to hone their skills and, and do better at their craft. And so they're going over there, they're losing, they're suffering in their confidence, they're overworked, and they're leaving. They're leaving for county council, they're leaving to the surrounding counties, and that is the cycle that we're in. I appreciate your time today, and I hope that you can help ensure that we, that we get the fair compensation that we worked so hard for.
Thank you.
My name is Kwakto. I am a public defender level five. I've been in the office for 10 years. Mr. Serna, I've been a resident of your district for 10 years. Now, the only point I want to address with the board is the board's concerned about setting a bad precedent by overruining labor in these negotiations. Now, we understand that concern. The board does not want to signal to every other union that you can simply ignore the process, go lobby with the board supervisors, and expect you folks to step in if you simply have disagreement with labor and expect that you can get the board to act on your behalf if you simply lobbied them. Now, it, two points. It would be a bad precedent if this board, for this board, to act if, for example, we lost that fact-finding, ignored the results of that fact-finding, and still lobbied you folks. Two, if you acted and told labor they need to give us a reasonable offer consistent with that fact-finding report, you wouldn't be acting simply because we're asking you to. You'd be doing so because it's what's fair, you'd be doing so because it's supported by the findings of an independent fact-finder that both parties stipulated to, and you'd be doing so because labor has chosen to ignore that fact-finding report and has refused to act in good faith. So to the contrary, the only bad precedent in this board risk setting would be by failing to act, because failing to act would signal to, that it's okay for labor, as my colleagues have noted, to act in bad faith, to delay, to bully us and force us into a costly and time-consuming arbitration process, only to simply ignore the findings of that neutral fact-finder after a multi-day evidentiary hearing, with testimony by expert witnesses and department heads, including Tin Ho and Joe Cress. So we are asking you to set a precedent that labor cannot act in this way. The board, in January 2023, forced labor to provide us a COLA adjustment so that parties could proceed to fact-find on the issue of equity. You took the extraordinary step because it was fair and it was the right thing to do. So today, we are asking you to once again act, because in this case, once again, it's the right thing to do, it's the fair thing to do, and we're asking you because the future of our respective offices requires it. Thank you.
My name is Matt Chisholm. I'm a DA with Sacramento County. I've been here 19 years. I have been on the board of the union for nine years, and I am the current president. I appreciate your time. Attorneys are a much maligned group. We are the punchline of every roadkill joke that you've ever heard.
You do realize you're addressing politicians, though.
But my members are normal attorneys. They are trial lawyers, and they are public servants. They are a rare breed, less than 10% of law school graduates, and they are fighting on both sides of the aisle in this criminal justice system. We have lawyers that are ensuring public safety, and we have attorneys that are ensuring individual rights and a check on the system. The check on the system's needed, not because it's broken, but because the system is full of human participants, and it is our members that help bring truth to light before these juries. It's important. We chose this job not to get rich. We chose it because we believe in the system. The public wants robust representation on both sides of the system and trust this county. The public wants robust representation on both sides of the system and trust this county to staff our courts properly. The fact-finding report laid out where the market sits. Labor has completely ignored the fact-finding report, reiterating their position that no change will be made. That's not fair. You guys recognize that by overruling them and imposing the COLAs. We need you to act again, impose fairness again, and return us to focusing on our very important job. Thank you.
Get some hesitation that, when I used to hear that, I used to get really excited, but now it's kind of hesitant when you throw that out. A lot of things changing in Sacramento. I'm gonna start off saying what I say to Gavin, if you're able to see this, I'm still waiting to hear from you. We got some attorneys in here, so I do want to let them know, these meetings used to be three minutes. Out of nowhere, they got changed to two minutes. Maybe you guys could help get that back to the people, as the majority of all you went over your two minutes, and you guys are, you know, trained in doing this type of thing. Or they could probably educate you guys on perjury as well. So this next one, it's kind of personal to me, since I recently became disabled and am feeling ill. You guys also removed that call-in line, which used to allow people with disabilities to call in in the event that they can't make it up here. Now the only way for their voice to be heard is for them to drag the butt up here, as you guys took that away from them after they came and asked you guys for a raise, the individuals that were helping take care of them. So you saw, and they literally told you how hard it was to come up here, and yet you guys ignored them. And I'm sure you guys know, another thing that motivated me to come up here today was, I did hear about your guys' pay error, which I told you guys over a year ago to look into that. That's terrible. And now hearing this about them, you guys are elected officials, you guys, so, they may not know, but that first day that you guys found out about you guys getting more money, you voted it in. But I just heard they've been waiting since 2021. The other people, you guys had them camping outside, and it took them that long, but as soon as you heard about yours, you guys were ready to go. And you didn't even care to look into the fine details. Where'd that get you? Do some better work.
So we have next on the list, it says Shaver. Is that correct? No. Okay. Chris Orr.
Thank you. Recognize that, thank you. Good afternoon, Board. My name is Chris Orr. I'm with the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office. I have spoken before you many times in my role representing the CPS Oversight and the Child Death Review Team. I supervise our child assault unit, and as you are aware, child assault cases are rising. The attorneys in my unit have nearly doubled the amount of cases they had five or six years ago, and the attorneys that come to my unit have half the experience. It used to be that we'd have attorneys arriving with 20 trials, they now arrive with less than half of that, and they go through our unit much quicker. As I hear the numbers today about the middle force that is leaving us, that we have such a small middle force, it causes me concern. I've been a trial attorney, trying trials for, you know, 27 years, trying some of our most serious cases, and I worry about how we're going to achieve justice when we have people who aren't going to stay in our office. We've had at least 10 or 11 people that I know of leave for Placer County, leave for county council because the pay is better and the work-life is better. The work-life is better for Placer County, not because they're not doing the same sort of work, but the volume they do is much, much less. Other counties do a lot less volume of cases than we do. Sacramento should be proud that when a defendant wants his jury trial, we're able to provide it. There's a public defender and there's a DA who are going to go over to court, and we did more trials during COVID than many, many other jurisdictions. We kept the wheels of justice going. These DA's and these public defenders could be someplace else. They could go to a better job, where they could get more pay in the private field, but they want to do justice for our community, and we should want justice to be done here in this community, to make sure that everyone is appropriately represented. When I looked at the fact-finder's reports, he said that it is detrimental to the county's express interest, on page 49, not to give us this compensation package, detrimental to our interests, your interests, your constituent interests. I think back, I've only got a few years left, but I bought my home in Land Park in 2003 as an attorney for. I'm a supervising deputy district attorney, who's been a supervisor for 15 years, and I could not afford my own home in my own neighborhood as a supervisor in Land Park now. Where will our next wave of public defenders and DA's live if they want to work in this community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Omar Singh. I'm a principal criminal attorney at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office. I consider myself very fortunate to have worked there for 18 years. For the past two years of that, out of that 18, we have been out of contract, and I think I speak for most of the attorneys here, we don't have the foggiest idea why. Sacramento County is very lucky, on both sides of the table, the public defender's office and the district attorney's office, you have attorneys that are not scared of going to trial, knockout, drag-out, intellectual brawls in a courtroom to achieve justice. But I think what makes Sacramento County extremely lucky is, on both sides, both sides endeavor to try to reach a fair resolution for everybody involved, the community and the defendant that's in the situation. So we are very specifically situated where we know a good deal when we see one, and what the report lays out is a good deal. It's not a bargaining position where we've hired somebody to create some numbers. These are facts that tell you that just to be minimally competitive, this is where you need to be. One of the things that I think is very important is the schedule of how things unfolded. We contacted the county eight months before the contract was set to expire. Because we understand that there's a retroactivity policy that protects the county, we were ignored. A month later, we reached out again, again, silence. It wasn't until March of the following year that meetings were set up and the county set deadlines that they themselves failed to meet. And to this point, to this date, we don't really have a resolution to any of those issues. And the retroactivity policy, it's a good one, the county agrees with it, and we did everything to abide by that, to honor that and respect that, and not cost the county any additional money. But something that is a shield for the county, it feels like it's been weaponized and turned into a sword in these negotiations. The county has benefited of a windfall of $1.5 million and counting. And the only other thing I'd like to say when it comes to losing attorneys is, I live in Solano County. Mr. Klinkenbeard and I both are running back and forth to court on a death penalty case, dealing with jury issues. I drive 45 minutes in and probably an hour home. My cohorts, or the people in the district attorney's office and public defender's office in Solano County, make 19% more than I do. So when you look at young attorneys that are looking at the rest of their career and their retirement, I don't know how you're going to keep them here. So I hope that you guys hear us, and we can figure out whatever's been the obstacle and get past this impasse. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. Item 45, county executive comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. Just two quick comments. One, as you know, the heat's been fairly high in the last couple of days, and just want to remind folks that we are in partnership with all our cities, opening cooling centers. And if folks are looking for cooling centers, we've also partnered with RT, and RT is providing free rides to those cooling centers. And if folks are looking for where those are located, the best place to do is call 211 or look at 211's website. The other piece I would bring up to you, Friday morning, we all woke up to a pretty devastating impact to our computer systems worldwide. I just wanted to take a moment, while we woke up to it, it actually happened in the middle of the night. We had several folks from DTEC coming into the office and fixing our computers to make sure all our systems were back up. We had a couple of public counters closed till about 10:00 a.m., then they opened those back up. Some went a little longer, but DTEC worked through the evening and continued to work through the weekend, still bringing up all our systems. We still have approximately 300 or so PCs that are still down, and they continue to work on them, but I just want to recognize the staff work from DTEC and also thank the rest of the staff for their patience as we continue to go through this process and fix these things. So, thank you.
Thank you. I see Supervisor Serna's chimed in, but I want to, just because you've opened the door with the heat, and wanted to ask Emily Halcone if she'd come up to the podium for a moment. If that's okay. Thank you for being here all day, Emily. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I learned a lot.
So I just, you know, and county council and I have discussed this, so we're not going to go back and forth, this is not agendized, but I just want, there's a mythology out there that Sacramento County is no longer providing any water for our unhoused neighbors, and I wanted you to address that briefly.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know that there's been a lot out there, and I appreciate the opportunity to tell you what we are doing. So it is absolutely not true that we're not providing water to folks experiencing homelessness. What is true is that the method of delivery and the way we're partnering with other community members has shifted. As you know, we had a very large contract during COVID, which allowed for very large distributions of water into large encampments, the pallet level. And with the COVID crisis ending, we have been working with our community partners over the last six months to shift water delivery, to focus on, to be coordinated with our outreach efforts. And in the county, outreach efforts are led through my office, and in other cities, outreach efforts are through their own departments. And so what we have done here at the county is we use the last remaining of our ARPA dollars for our COVID-related water to buy a stockpile of water. It's no longer the large pallets, it's gallon-sized jugs that people can carry on their own person. We have bought enough water that we think will last through approximately this early fall, and we've made it available to outreach partners, including Community Health Works and our own Paws Mobile Veterinary Clinic, as well as some other community partners. And so during the course of outreach, they are able to take that water out to encampments where they're directed. That would be inclusive of those workers in the city of Sacramento. The other thing that we've done in partnership with our Health Services Department, especially over the July 4th weekend, week, where there was excessive heat, is we added additional water in our core centers throughout the county. As you know, the core centers are already serving folks experiencing homelessness, and so we made sure that the county added additional water into those sites in the county and, again, offered that to our community partners. The city of Citrus Heights was one who very graciously coordinated with us and added water into those. And so there is water available for outreach professionals, and as this current stockpile dwindles, we're looking on how to enhance our outreach contract and really encouraging our community partners in other cities to do the same in their outreach contracts.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yep.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. Couple things. Just wanted to publicly thank everyone involved with the 2024 California Capitol Air Show, especially Darcy and her crew. Was a bit of a different format this year in terms of the timing each day, and I think it worked. And we had some new centerpiece parts of the show that we don't usually have available to us. So I thought it went very well and certainly gave spectators and neighbors around the Ranch Cordova community something to really enjoy over the, was it, two days of the air show, and so looking forward already to next year, but I didn't want too much time to go by without expressing thanks for yet another great air show. And then I do want to make mention of an event that I have brought the attention of Supervisor Hume. I'm not sure I've talked to the rest of the board about it, but it's going to be the first annual, this will be the 2024 Pup Cup Golf Tournament at Land Park Golf Course, otherwise known as Land Park Country Club. And this is a tournament that's being put on by the owners of Mojo's. And if you're not familiar with Mojo's, it is a taproom just down, down the way here on 15th and I Street. Scotty and his wife Kristen own and run the place, and they are animal lovers through and through. I've put them in contact with our Director of Animal Care and Control, Annette, and she is a willing partner. This, hopefully, annual event will raise money for our animal shelter, and so we're very grateful that that's the beneficiary, and we in District One have attempted to assist a little bit with some financing for the tournament, but would encourage anyone else interested, come see me and I'll get you all the information, and if you want to put together a foursome, I assume there's, I think there's still some foursomes left, but this is intended to be a very, very informal golf tournament, only nine holes, and I'm told that if you bother to wear a collared shirt, you're going to have strokes added to your card. So it's one of those types of deals. Anyhow, looking forward to that and the years to come to have kind of that partnership that benefits one of our great agencies and the people that take care of our animals here in Sacramento County.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. Am I correct to assume that we're on to item 46, the supervisor comments?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope so.
First of all, in the spirit of Supervisor Serna's comments there, I just want to put the radar for a couple folks for some items that are happening in my district. This weekend, we have the Strauss Festival in Elk Grove, runs Thursday to Sunday, great performance anticipated there. And then this weekend will be the Pear Fair down in Cortland. It's a one-and-a-half-day event this year, Saturday afternoon to early evening, as well as then Sunday will be the traditional fair and parade. Now, I want to go back, and I apologize, I don't want to run afoul of noticing requirements and such, given that it was a non-agendized item, but the attendance in chambers here today, and I hope that that did not disrupt the docket and the building kitty corner from us. But we have a very terse and tenuous situation with some folks that are critical to the wheels of justice in Sacramento County. And irrespective of what has happened in the past, and I make no valid judgment about that, because two sides can disagree on their opinions, but given that I was not here for any of that and have only been brought into this as recent as the closed session at last, regularly-agendized board meeting, I have merely a suggestion and a recommendation. And my suggestion is that we begin in earnest the negotiations for the next contract period, rather than waiting until we butt up against the expiration of the current contract. And my recommendation is that we employ the same firm and methodology used for the other class compensation surveys that we've done through other departments within the county, so that we have a factual basis to bolster our position. And I don't expect any comment on that, because as I said, this is not an agendized item, and I only speak as one supervisor, but I just wanted to say those things for my edification. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we do have two items for closed session, so we're adjourned.